We'll reconvene into open session. All items discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. I extend a very warm welcome to everyone here tonight and to those who will watch this program on television. The Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent-approved budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We're not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. I ask that you silence your cellphones if you haven't already done so, and we appreciate your interest in Waco ISD, and we are especially appreciative of the parents who came out tonight in support of their students. At this time, I'd like to pause for a moment of silence before the Pledge of Allegiance. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Singing) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Come back up. Y'all are gonna be mad at me, but I would like to propose that we make a slight change in the order of our agenda tonight because we have so many students and parents here to move our audience for guests until after our special recognitions. So switch items five and six, let's see, yeah, switch items five and six on our agenda. Does anybody have an objection to that change?
Yeah.
Even, I know, see, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Okay, hearing no objection, the audience, the agenda will be reordered, and at this time, we will consider our special recognitions. Now, you can go.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, we're pleased to have two students from Brook Avenue Elementary School that led us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Jakaya Gross and Christopher Edwards. Mr. -- Ms. Julie Sapaw is the principal of Brook Avenue Elementary School and has accompanied the students this evening, so thank you for making your way down. So we're gonna begin our special recognition portion of our meeting with an introduction of our pledge leaders. Jakaya Gross, a third grader, says math is her favorite subject and enjoys reading, doing art in the after-school program, and riding her bike. One of Jakaya's teachers said she is a hard worker, very conscientious, she also has perfect attendance for the school year.[246.15][246.15](Applause). When she grows up, she wants to become a gymnast. Christopher Edwards is a fourth grader at Brook Avenue as well, and his favorite class is also math. Christopher enjoys doing science experiments, playing basketball, and he wants to become a professional basketball player when he grows up. One of Christopher's teachers said he is an extremely respectful and kind student, and guess what? He also has perfect attendance at school.[278.62][278.62](Applause). Now, each month, we always recognize the parents of our pledge leaders, and no, we haven't forgotten to do that this evening. There's something unique about this evening's pledge leaders, they're actually brother and sister. Jakaya and Christopher's mother, Donshell McDonald, has joined him, them, this evening. We'd also like to note that Ms. McDonald -- (laughter) -- we'd also like to note that she was the first parent to enroll her children at Brook Avenue for the 2019-2020 school year, and here's our picture on screen.[320.12][320.12](Laughter). So Ms. McDonald, thank you very much for sharing your wonderful children with us this evening.[328.77][328.77](Laughter and applause). Each year, the architecture firm PBK holds an annual contest which gives students from schools designed by the firm the opportunity to showcase their artistic talents through a creative outlet. Submissions which should represent their school building in part or whole can be drawn, colored, or designed using their medium of choice. This year, Bells Hill Elementary School had two students whose submissions won in the most recent PBK calendar contest. Tonight, we're excited to recognize these two students and their art teacher. We'll be displaying photos of their artwork on the screens. At this time, please join me in welcoming from Bells Hill Elementary School Luis Gomez[372.03][372.03](applause) and Juan Lares, both fourth graders. Ms. Marilissa Young, the art teacher at Bells Hill unfortunately couldn't be here this evening, but we appreciate her dedication to her students and for encouraging and guiding their artistic expression. If you are a parent or family member here to support Luis or Juan this evening, please stand so that we may recognize you as well.[403.19][403.19](Applause). Congratulations to these students on their outstanding artistic achievements, and thank you for representing Waco ISD so well. The Texas Art Education Association recognizes March as Youth Art Month, and each year, districts across the state are invited to submit artwork made by pre-kindergarten through 12th grade student artists to be selected for exhibition in the Youth Art Month State Capitol Artwork Exhibit in Austin. The 2020 exhibit, which will feature 100 selections, will begin with a display in the lower rotunda of the Texas State Capitol Building and continue at the Bob Bullock Texas State History Museum. For the second year in a row, a Waco ISD student's piece was selected for this honor. At this time, please join me in welcoming from Lake Air Montessori Magnet School, first Cora's watercolor scene, "Fall Forest," can be seen on the screens at this time, a beautiful piece of art. This evening, we'd also like to recognize Ms. Nikki Stokes, the art teacher at Lake Air for her dedication to her students and for encouraging and guiding their artistic expression. If you are a parent -- oh.[484.81][484.81](Applause). If you are a parent or family member here to support Cora this evening, please stand so that we may recognize you as well in the back.[496.12][496.12](Applause). Congratulations, Cora, on such a great honor, especially at such a young age. Up next, we'd like to recognize a group of musicians who have shown outstanding success by demonstrating or displaying their artistic talents. Eight orchestra students from both Waco High School and University High School competed at the UIL string solo and ensemble contest held earlier this month. With solos in viola, violin and cello, and both viola and string quartets, the talented musicians received excellent and superior ratings. But this evening, we'll be recognizing a specific group of musicians from Waco High School whose Class I viola quartet received a superior rating and qualified them to compete at the UIL state solo and ensemble contest that will be held this summer in Austin. Please welcome the state qualifying viola quartet from Waco High School Evelyn Guavera[550.16][550.16](applause) and Sophia Schwenke. You notice I said quartet, and this is a duo. Their counterparts, Bridget Eichenberg and Emmy Scott, unfortunately were not here this evening, but we'd be remiss if we didn't recognize the dedication, support, and guidance provided by their orchestra director. Please welcome the orchestra director for both University High School and Waco High School, Eric Wolf.[581.01][581.01](Applause). If any parents or family members of these musicians are here tonight, would you please stand and be recognized?[593.04][593.04](Applause). Congratulations to these students on your outstanding musical success, and good luck at state this summer. Waco ISD high school students were invited to participate in the Student Innovation Challenge sponsored by design firm DLR Group at the TASSA Midwinter Conference held January 26th to 29th in Austin, and both high schools selected two sophomores to participate. A total of 16 students from four school districts participated in a challenge-based learning activity where they were asked to use collaboration and teamwork to solve a local learning problem using the resources of the DLR Group and participants in the TASSA Midwinter Conference. The result was a learning exhibition that culminated in a presentation highlighting each team's unique solutions to the problem. The goal was to ignite student engagement through the design process and encourage dialogue between students and their districts to prompt additional learning activities back in their home districts. Now, as part of the design challenge, the students created the organization Frog. First generation road to graduation. They were praised by organizers for their creativity, design, and ability to work as a team and as a cross-district team. Please welcome this evening the Waco ISD students who participated in this Student Innovation Challenge, first from University High School, Esmeralda Castillo and Saul Rangel. Our two students from Waco High School this evening aren't here, Zane Arterburn and Abigail Zimmerman. This team of students, though, had an outstanding chaperone that was on hand to provide support and guidance, so at this time, please join us in recognizing Carla Donaldson, an instructional specialist in our Advanced Academics Department. Amy Koch, a K-12 education business development leader for DLR Group, had initially planned on joining us this evening, but was unable to attend, but she did share these words with us. "The DLR Group team is extremely proud of the students that represented Waco ISD. Their professionalism, work ethic, and solution-driven team approach was extremely impressive. Their presentation at the conference was extremely impressive as well. The new Frog organization has a bright future with these students as its leaders and support from the Waco ISD. Keep believing in yourself." Thank you to the DLR Group for giving our students this unique opportunity, and congratulations to our students once again for representing Waco ISD.[754.42][754.42](Applause). University High School's Advanced Audio-Visual Production Program was invited by KXXV25 ABC News to participate in parent company Script Media's News Literacy Project. Across the nation, Script's journalists worked directly with high schools and their communities to produce original pieces of student journalism, teaching them about the standards and principles journalists use to identify, research, and produce a story. Following the winter break, students conducted interviews and shot footage to produce their first televised news piece which aired on Channel 25 on January 27th. Their piece focused on the work and impact of communities and schools, an organization that has had a partnership with University High School for the past six years. With guidance from KXXV25 reporter Sierra Shipley, students learned firsthand what an industry professional does on a daily basis in the world of television journalism. Please welcome from the UHS Advanced AV Production Class this evening Rafael Flores[816.98][816.98](applause), Yanni Galvin and Angelina Monroe. We'd also like to recognize their AV production teacher for his hard work and dedication and for giving his students such unique and vital opportunity to put their skills to the test, If any parents or family members are here this evening, would you please stand and be recognized as well? Congratulations to these outstanding students for their work on an impressive project. We can't wait to see what you do next. The Stock Market Game is an engaging educational program used in classrooms nationwide to teach economics, math, social studies, business, language arts, and technology while focusing on the importance of developing real-world personal finance skills. Teams of students in grades four through 12 use the Stock Market Game simulation to learn the basics of investing as they create and manage an online portfolio of over a number of weeks. For the Fall 2019 Game, the Texas Council of Economic Education declared the team from University High School as the number-one stock market team in the Central Texas Stock Market Game. University High competed against 273 teams from as far south as San Antonio and north and west to the Amarillo and Lubbock areas. Teams were given $100,000 in virtual money at the end of September, virtual money, and the University High team increased that amount to $128,145.99 by the first week in December when the Fall Semester Game officially closed. Now, the team's nearest competitor was another high school team. They came up with almost $6,500 less than the team that won. They'd also like to note that they even beat out a team from the University of Texas Law School at the state game level.[949.23][949.23](Laughter). Now, our team unfortunately is not here this evening. I think they heard that the stock market had a low hit today. But none of that would have been possible without the support and guidance from their teacher. So please join me this evening in recognizing UHS Government and Economics teacher Teresa Norris.[970.20][970.20](Applause). Now, congratulations again to these students for their impressive victory in the Central Thank you, Ms. Norris.[1008.82][1008.82](Applause). And finally, Waco ISD's theme for the 2019-2020 school year is "Rise." The theme celebrates learning and growing as well as overcoming challenges and recognizes that no school district rises by itself. Instead, Waco ISD rises when families, employees, and the community join together and realize their shared hopes and dreams for the district's students and their future. Waco ISD is blessed to have scores of community partners who are deeply invested in our district's students and their success. Each month, the district will recognize a community partner making a difference with the Rise Award for Outstanding Community Partners. In February, the district is proudly recognizing Education Service Center Region 12. The team from the Service Center has been a tremendous asset and partnered this year by hosting various events such as our first round of Design Thinking Institute and an A- through F accountability training session. They have also worked with district and campus staff on school improvement efforts, including data-driven instruction and action coaching. In January of this year, counselors from ESC Region 12 provided valuable counseling and support for staff and students following the tragic passing of University High School soccer coach Mike Chapman. The entire team at ESC Region 12 does so much more than we're able to cover this evening, and we're so appreciative for the multitude of ways that you support the initiative, staff, and students of Waco ISD. Here this evening to represent ESC Region 12 and accept the Rise Award for Outstanding Community Partner, please welcome Executive Director Jerry Mays, Coordinator Denise Bell, Dr. Mays, Ms. Bell, Ms. Cuchara, thank you for continuing to be an outstanding community partner for Waco ISD.
It's our pleasure, thank you.[1166.13][1166.13](Applause).
At this time, the Board will receive input under Audience for Guests. I have received three sign-up sheets. It looks like it's all on the same issue. It happens to be regarding item B on the consent agenda, which I had already been told was pulled for this evening, so that item won't be for consideration tonight, but that doesn't mean you gentlemen cannot speak to it. It looks like since you're all speaking on the same item, you're welcome to all three join the podium, and if you feel like you need nine minutes, nine minutes. Mr. Dupuy, do you mind keeping our clock tonight? So I don't know that I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm going to mispronounce names. I can see Mark.
Mark Gohean.
Jeff Horn and Griffin Emerson.
Hi, I'm Mark Gohean. I represent one of the manufacturers that bid the recent RFP outlined in 8B. I'm not gonna explain who we are, I'll just explain what we've done for the district, which will kind of paint a picture. We're the company that came in here a year ago. You guys had a Wi-Fi problem. We came in and delivered a solution that was a million dollars less than the incumbent and the other bidders. It provided you 2X the number of users. It was 40% less hardware, which is 40% less maintenance, 40% less overhead. It reduced your trouble tickets, which was consistently seven to 10 a week as facts given to us by your IT staff. We reduced it since we installed in August. We've had less than four trouble tickets, and none of them have been failures of our product. So we've got a very good track record, delivered a really great value to the district, which that Wi-Fi component is, if you're here in this room and we all wanted to stream video, a year ago, we couldn't have done it. Today, everybody in this room could pull up a YouTube video and stream it. Whether you're doing your star testing, virtual reality, trading stocks on an iPad or whatever, you know, product you guys use to access the internet, it all goes through our equipment to do that. Behind that is a switching component that ties you to the World Wide Web, okay? We're the guys that, we're one of the vendors that quoted this recent RFP. We protested the RFP because we felt one of the vendors was out of compliance. That, that was reviewed by the IT group and the procurement department. They agreed that there was not in compliance. We've asked, the, the, the district has taken the approach to rebid that, that RFP. The problem that the district's up against, and I just want to make sure they're aware, is this is the last year of the funding of a six-year E-Rate season. There's $400,000 of budget that has been allocated to Waco ISD. If you rebid, there's no more time to rebid. You'd have to rebid next year, and it would come out of next year's budget when you could take that $400,000 out of this year's budget, because it's a use-it-or-lose-it budget, okay? Typically, in an E-Rate, in an E-Rate environment, we went, we went back to USAC, who does all the funding for this, and E-Rate, who has all the rules and regulations, and we asked them, what, what are the options that Waco ISD has? They came back to us and said, and this was just today, that typically what they would do is follow the, the process and procedures outlined, which is to take the next lowest compliant bid. And you can do that today, you don't have to rebid, you don't have to go back and the cost and the time to rebid, and you can use $400,000 worth of money that is available to Waco ISD this year that is not available to you next year. And so our ask is, on behalf of us as the manufacturers, and clearly, we have our best interests at heart here, I'm not gonna hide behind that. We would be the incumbent vendor or the, the next bid, but it's in the best interest of Waco ISD to use $400,000 that if you don't use it, it goes away. It's a use-it-or-lose-it, and there's no risk to the district, and we've got a proven track record of delivering technology that works and works beyond any of our competitors. I think I've, anything else, guys? Okay, any questions?
Unfortunately, the Board's not able to ask questions at this time because we're not allowed to have a discussion during Audience for Guests.
Okay, I, our last point is, we are a conforming bid. We did follow the, the E-Rate specifications and guidelines. The other bid that was not conforming, it was, it was not anything to do with the Waco ISD or Waco ISD IT or administration, it was just they were not in, in conformance of the bid spec, which was clearly stated and spelled out in the RFP.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. I didn't receive any other requests to speak before the Board. Is there anybody else tonight who would wish to address the Board? So now, next on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Kim Cannon.
All right, good evening. I have three items tonight, the first item being introductions, and I would like to introduce Dr. Josie Hernandez Gutierrez. And I don't see her. There she is. Hi, Josie. Josie comes to us, she's our new Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. She comes to us with 25 years of experience in education. She served Fort Worth ISD for 17 years as an elementary classroom teacher, an assistant principal, and a principal, and then she was the Director of School Leadership, the District Steward, and an Assistant Superintendent of School Leadership. She also has served as a National Consultant for Partners for Leaders in Education with the University of Virginia's School Turnaround Program, and has been the Chief of Schools Officer for Spring ISD, and most recently was the founder and CEO of Proactive Leaders. She received a bachelor's degree in education from Texas Christian University and both a master's and a doctorate in Educational Administration from the University of Texas. She's been with us a week and doing a great job. Welcome, Josie. Thank you.
Thank you, Josie, welcome.
Happy to have her. The next item is about UIL realignment. As you might recall, in the fall, we submitted enrollment figures to the UIL. We had 2,223 students for UIL purposes. Waco High School was four students above the line dividing Class A from, 5A from 6A, Class 6A, and with 1,774 students, University High School was solidly in Class 5A Division II. Following the biennial reclassification on February 3rd, the UIL released the tentative district assignments for football, basketball, and volleyball for 2020 through 2022. University High's district assignment is pretty much identical to what it had been for the past two years, and on the other hand, Waco High School's assignment is markedly different. The only school that was in Waco High School's district for the past two years that is continuing to be in the district is, for the next two years, is Midway High School. Waco High School will be traveling north now to Cedar Hill, DeSoto, Duncanville, Mansfield, Mansfield-Lakeridge, and Waukesha-Hatchee. And that, of course, no doubt, is a very competitive district, but I'm excited to see what we can do in this new district, and so just wanted to make sure you all didn't miss that information. Last thing I have is to highlight some of the examples of the unique ways that our campuses celebrated Black celebrated Black History Month. It's so important that all of our students recognize the central role of African-Americans in U.S. history, and Waco High School's Black History Month program was a wonderful way to showcase those achievements. Coordinated by Assistant Principal Moore, the program entitled "A Mind is a Terrible Thing to Waste" showcased music, song, dance, and speech. This was also the first time that we had family, staff, and students participate in the program, and we should have some pictures to put on the screen. Do we have those? Josh, do we have those pictures? Maybe not. The Waco High School Show Choir performed a number of songs from the film Sister Act. Also, the jazz band played a special tribute to famous African-American musicians like Miles Davis and Louis Armstrong. Shifting from jazz to R&B and soul music, Crestview Elementary celebrated Black History Month by recognizing Motown's 60th anniversary, and I believe there's a picture back here, actually, of both of those two events. As an irresistible force of social and cultural change, Barry Gordy's legendary Motown made its mark not just on the music industry, but society at large, and students commemorated the early years of Motown with their first annual Motown Musical. Diana Ross and the Supremes were highlighted, along with famous hits from The Temptations. Parents also had an opportunity to engage in the workstation activities with their children, and it was a night to remember, with parents and students having a wonderful time celebrating African-American history and culture. And also, we had a variety of lessons and activities and projects all across the district regarding prominent historical figures and events. At GW Carver Middle School, students honored brave African-American leaders who came before them with writing projects and a Black History Gallery. And so as a school district that values diversity, it's essential that we celebrate our different cultures 365 days a year. Nonetheless, Black History Month and other heritage months provide us an important opportunity for our schools to remember and celebrate the contributions of Americans throughout our history. So those were just some of the examples of the activities conducted across our campuses, and we so appreciate our staff for their work to celebrate Black History Month with our students in our community. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. As already mentioned, item B has been polled. Does any other member of the board have an item they wish to have polled? I was not aware of any, and so at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes.
Second.
Thanks, Ms. Corderwick. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's passed as unanimously. Thank you. I see our architect, Mr. Sturzinger, sitting back in the corner of the room, and if he's ready, I will move him up on the agenda so that he can hit the road back to Austin, unless anybody has an objection.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Mr. Sturzinger, sorry I didn't give you any warning.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Do we have, want to pull up the presentation?
It's in the board packet.
Okay, it's in the board packet. Okay.
It's items 11 and 12.
While she's pulling that up, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here. We're very excited to be presenting here tonight, and have the opportunity to present really on two facets of the facilities projects that we've been working on with Waco ISD. And so we're going to start with the, really split into two halves. The first half is the budgeted maintenance projects, which are projects that the district has allocated funds for previously, and we're starting to move those through the design and the construction process. And so I'll give you an update on those. And then the second half of the presentation would be then on what we're calling Strategic Capital Improvement Projects, and those are projects really kind of starting to look out into the future about specific needs within the districts, within the district. So, starting with the budgeted maintenance projects, the district's identified many projects. These are just some of the projects that we've been asked to participate in. So you'll see that there are seven projects. Overall, this affects 17 campuses, or we're looking to support 17 campuses. And these projects range in energy efficiency elements, addressing end-to-life of equipment, improving safety and security around the campuses, and ultimately, looking at supporting operational effectiveness. You'll see each campus then, or each project then is listed in bold on the left, and we've identified the construction costs that are anticipated for these projects. So those funds are identified, or out of fund balance, or out of child nutrition services, for example. And then to the right of that, we've identified then the potential construction timeline that would be coming forward on these projects. So for example, on the LED lighting projects, we've hit, the budget's currently 192,000, so we're currently working through that design and scoping process. We plan to release those for bid here shortly, within the next couple of weeks, ultimately looking to bring it back to the board for approval of a construction contract in the March timeframe, which would then allow the constructions to start in the April timeframe. That gives us time to work through the seminal process, the procurement, and ultimately then the work to occur over the summer. And so you'll see kind of a similar trend as you go down the line, identifying the scope of work, what we're trying to identify within the projects, all the way down the line. So some are some pretty immediate hits, including the first three. The last ones are rolling out a little bit later, as we, those will take a little bit more design effort, require geotechnical engineering or survey to be implemented into the process. So we're excited to be able to support those, and really help out the district on those side, or on that side, the facility projects. So we'd welcome any questions that you have for this first series. Okay, here are none. Then we'll move on to the second one, and this is a little bit more of a, I'll say, kind of crystal ball approach of looking out towards the future. And so the Strategic Capital Improvement Projects are really a series of projects that were identified by Dr. Kim Cannon, as she went around and toured the facilities and the campuses around the district. We additionally had the opportunity to tour the campuses as well, and so we're starting to see some information coalesce between the two about our understanding of the facilities, along with some of the needs that Dr. Kim Cannon has identified. I would identify that these projects are very conceptual in nature, so you may see that there are suggestions of blocks or places. That's really an idea of, could it happen? Yes, it could happen here, and getting into where, how it could be built from there.
Could I also add, this is working document, so these are the initial projects that have been identified, but we can add to or take away from in any way that you all like, but these are just initial observations of some projects that we might want to pursue as funds become available.
That's exactly correct. And so, the next step, of course, would be if the board so chose to move forward with any of these, or taking any of them off, is it would actually be, go through a design process that would include design phase, bidding, negotiation, and construction. And ultimately, you know, we're looking for the board to address any particular needs that are identified out of this process, that by no means are these ready to go or definitive. We're looking for input from you. So the thought would be tonight, is I'd present 1 through 10, would welcome any questions that you have at the end, and I'll hit them kind of at a high level, but you can kind of dive as deep as you would like as we move forward. So here you see the list of the 10 projects. Again, conceptual nature, and as we move into the first project, it would be for Providence Heights Gymnasium. And so one of the observations that we had as we went around the campuses is the varying sizes of the gymnasium facilities. So specifically at Providence Heights, as well as, there are some other similar campuses. The existing gymnasium's 1,450 square feet, so that's roughly the size of two classrooms. As we talk about constructing facilities today, and under TEA, which applies after 2004 facilities, you'd have a minimum of 3,000 square feet would be the recommended gym size from there. We do see elementary schools today building as large as 4,400 square feet for gymnasiums. Actually had one build a competition gym, but that's more of the rarity than anything else. So right now, Providence Heights has a capacity of 520 students. 380 currently attend there. You'll see then the proposed gym space, and so that red block that you see on there is the suggestion of where it could go. That is directly adjacent to the existing gym, so there would be access, but we would need to, as the design evolves, take into account as simple as drainage. How do you access it? Does that impact operations on the facilities? There are a lot of elements that would come into play. So then, the estimated cost, we're showing at 1.8 to 2.5 million dollars if that project were to move forward, and that would be total project cost. So that includes soft cost as well as hard cost. So the hard cost or the construction cost you would pay. Soft cost would be design fees, permitting, survey. There is contingency and inflation built into those numbers, so roughly, we've planned for about a year timeframe to start in construction. So depending upon the actual timing of the project, that number may need to adjust accordingly. And then from beginning to end, it would take approximately 18 months to go through that entire design, bid, build process.
That space, as it currently exists, is really difficult to teach in. I don't know how you would describe that ceiling, but the acoustics are really bad.
So there's currently no acoustic treatment within the facility, so it has a hard surface floor, which you see in gyms, and then it's the CMU walls, and then basically a drywall ceiling. So I'm sure with 30, 40 kids in there, it'll get a little bit loud.
Is Brook similar?
It is the same campus, so this was the first one identified, and the campuses, as we tour them, there are campuses like Mountain View that did receive a gymnasium addition about 15 years ago, and others still have the original gymnasium.
And there are several that look like Mountain View.
That's correct.
Yes. Those are pretty good. Yes, those are good.
Yeah.
They're newer school, much newer school. It really cost $600 to build a gym.
So that is total project cost, and then the space that we identified, the 3,000 to 4,400 square feet are the gymnasium side. So we would include support space like storage and office in with that, and then as well as circulation space. So that's why it's not necessarily directly translated to 1.8 million divided by 3,000. There's extras in there that we haven't identified all the program. So one of the next steps would be to confirm that program and confirm that final price. But it is, we recently built one, I think it was right around 303.25. I'd have to look at the exact, on construction cost only.
Plus in share.
And the contingency inflation, so we've included about 35, 40% on top of construction cost is how we plan it at this point. And we have a lot of detail and background that we could share with the board if you were interested in looking at that kind of detail.
Gyms are expensive, and you, and the inflation is there because you may or may not choose to do this at any time soon, and so it's a really, truly a guess at this point. Yeah.
That's correct.
I'm wondering who actually bids.
Correct. And my goal as an architect is to be, I'll say, conservative in nature at this point, because we don't want to have to come back and ask for more money if the project so chose to move forward.
I'll point out one thing on this campus. I learned that Providence Heights actually owns the piece of property to the right. There's a lot to the right of that road, so there may be some opportunity to do some work on circulation there. We'll talk about circulation of some of our sites in just a few moments, but there may be some opportunities to come up with a better plan for the school overall in terms of stack space for getting parents in and out, in and off of the site. So we could do something different, but this is just a concept at this point, to see where you all want to prioritize projects.
Okay. So then for the second project, is starting off in, I'll say, in a conceptual stance, is about district-wide portable use. Ultimately, if the board so chose to reduce and/or eliminate the use of the portables, we would really need, we will plan to hone in on a study that really focuses around enrollment and capacity. And there's two factors, or a few factors in that. So first, enrollment is how many students are planned to be at that school currently, and what is the, I'll say, five-year and 10-year outlook for enrollment, of how are we addressing growth or shrinking capacity, or shrinking enrollment within the school? The other is total capacity, which is the idea that if you filled every classroom, every seat, every period, how many students would you be able to fit within that school? We know in all reality, that's not realistic, is that teachers are going to have off periods. You won't fill 25 students in every single classroom, and so ultimately, we use an efficiency factor varying at the individual levels, usually about 80% of the total capacity. That would be the effective capacity within the school. And so that would drive, in essence, as you look at enrollment and effective capacity, are you, do you have excess capacity in the school, or do you need capacity? And so usually, when you need capacity, that's when you see portables come into play. So right now, from our initial look at the district, and we're confirming on some of these numbers, there's 26 and a half portables at the district that we've counted at the elementary, middle, and high school campuses. The reason it's a half is usually portables are a single unit with two classrooms, so we're counting 53 classroom spaces at this time. And you'll see then two banks of schools there, that right now, from our initial take, the schools are under the effective capacity with, that have portables on the site. So for example, Cedar Ridge that you see there in the top-right image, you'll see the red square that highlights the portables. Right now, from our initial analysis, the enrollment is below the permanent capacity of the facility, meaning that there's potential that you could look at taking those portables away with no adverse impact on the campus. We'll need to have discussions about what are in those portables, can realign those things, but ultimately, can we reduce? And then the bottom group is schools that are over the effective campus, over the effective campus capacity that do have portables. So the second example you see there is Tennyson. Right now, we're calculating that there are more students that are attending that school than there is permanent capacity at the school. So the next step would be, ultimately, if the board, again, so chose to eliminate portables within the district, the question would be, is how do we address enrollment of the campuses? Is that building permanent facilities? Is it moving where kids are at, or other facility strategies? And then ultimately, how are we addressing the capacity as the district as a whole?
President. Yes, sir. Okay, we take the issue of having all these portables and remove them. Are you going to look at the, a lot of our schools are old already. Are you going to look at the age of the school and what it's going to take to get some of them up to par at the same time?
Yes, sir. So I'm going, the very last slide, I'm hoping, is going to hit that exact issue. Thank you for teeing that up.
I've been to a couple of them, so.
Absolutely. So there's the direction, the goal of the district, and so right now, I do have a dollar identified on there, and that would be the dollar to pay someone to remove those portables, not to build any capacity within the district. Now, right now, that is a cost per unit moving forward. There is the option that you could sell those portables and then, in essence, be awash. That would be a question that we would have to evaluate if somebody would be willing to buy them and be able to move that forward.
There's some additional savings, too, because we learned that the district has been leasing some portables, so we could take those leased portables offline and save some payments.
Jared, on the goal for that portable use, I find it's kind of a difficult goal to state optimizing learning in safe environments for students and still have portables. So I'm hoping to eliminate the reduction of portables and go with the eliminate portables.
Absolutely.
Great.
So moving on to project number three, I'll kind of roll through these unless you all have questions, was providing permanent parking at the Central Stadium for baseball. It's currently located northwest of the two existing fields is a parking lot that is currently unpaved. There are some kind of, I'll call it, wheel stops that appear to be logs. Ultimately, the goal of this project would be to provide about 300 permanent spaces with either asphalt or concrete paving, provide the sidewalks, ADA accessibility, provide parking lot lighting, and then maybe some safety netting around the fields for errant fly balls there in the area, from the other team, of course. fly balls there in the area, from the other team, of course. So right now, the estimated cost for that would be 1.2 million dollars, again, total project cost, and that would take about 12 months to be able to proceed on that one. Project number four is Paul Tyson Field Replacement. So this project is, as a result, or part of the discussion of the projects with the McLennan County Venue Project, as well as the City of Waco Project, and kind of the shifts of land that would be moving between those facilities. And so ultimately, the county would take over what is currently leased, the leased space of Paul Tyson Field. So we've worked through a couple of concepts. This is still just a concept. Will require design phase, but ultimately shows a football stadium that would be UIL compliant, eight-lane track, artificial turf field, 2,000-seat grandstands, press box, lighting, ticketing concession, and locker room support, basically replacing the support and function of Paul Tyson where Paul Tyson Field currently is located on the Waco High School property. This could continue to change and evolve as we would move into a design phase. But this one, we'd look at a project cost of 9.5 million dollars and about 17 months for design and construction of the facility. Project number five is a very similar project to project number four, actually, except for this is for university high school, and in essence, bringing both of those into similar status between the two. So you'll see, again, UIL competition, eight-lane track, which actually currently exists, but then providing artificial turf field, 2,000-seat grandstand, press box, lighting, ticketing concession. The challenge with this one, and you'll see kind of the red boxes, is we start to look at planning in the future of that, it grows much larger than the current footprint is in and around the track, and specifically affects the practice fields on each side. So you'll see that the construction cost here is a little bit more, and is to relocate those fields into other areas on the campus on that one. So again, cost is 11.8 million and about 18 months for design and construction on this project. Project number six is the Final Athletic Project. So this would be addressing high school tennis at Waco High School, as well as university high school. The goal would be is to provide a total of eight courts at each campus, or per campus, that would provide the opportunity to host a UIL event. You'd get your courts, netting, lighting, fencing, wind screens, access. And I would suggest a small seating area as you move forward. It'll move it out of a recreational facility and move it to an athletic facility, which becomes an important distinction as you move forward. This would be $900,000 per campus, so 1.8 million dollars in total for four courts at each campus, and take about 14 months to design and construct. Project number seven is the one that Dr. Kinkanen alluded to about site access. And so I phrase this one, as we look at the way that campuses and really parents interact, and students interact with the campus of getting onsite, from some, one of these original facilities to really, in the last 10 to 20 years, is that we see a whole lot less walkers and bikers to campuses, and a lot more car riders and bus riders along the way. And so campus-like Tennyson that you see up there, the goal would be to provide adequate parent circulation to be able to get onsite, and then we're suggesting maybe a off-ramp for bus circulation. So the concept is, if you look at the screen, you've got the long arrow on the bottom, that could represent a connection from the back connecting to the front, really increase the queue length to get parents off the street while they're waiting in the afternoon. And then the top arrow would represent a queue length, and we'd want to confirm the exact length. But buses could then pull off the street, not affect the front parking lot, and be able to get both of them as well as we can off the street. You'll see on the left side there, it says campuses evaluated. So we basically stepped through each one of these campuses, created a concept that we would need to go back and verify with the campus to make sure this is adequately meeting their needs. There's an easement and a lot of other discussion that would occur. But to address these eight campuses, it'd be $980,000 and about 10 months to design and build for this project.
Another question. Brook Avenue. Brook Avenue has a heck of a problem with the neighborhood that they live in, and that little side street they come down. And I've been hearing problems with parents and teachers about the Brook Avenue, the things they have to do to try to get the kids in and out of the school.
It is definitely one that we can add to the list, sir.
Yeah, so you see that all across the district with, a lot of the elementary schools have very small pieces of property, and the parents are pushed out onto the streets, and it's really a challenge. And so Chief Williams brought that to my attention. Pretty early on, I had seen that as well, and just have continued to observe that. And that's pretty prevalent across the district. And we could add Providence Heights on here, too, just after having talked about that, and knowing that there's another piece of property that we could work with and improve that situation. So, but that, we could take a look at Brook.
And another problem, I know at Brook, I'm not sure about some of the other elementary schools, but the lack of sidewalks. I know that's not our problem. I know that that's a city problem. But it's another issue that there's a, I forget what side of the street is on, but there's one side where the kids have to almost walk in the street to get back and forth from school. And I know, I know that the city, the city's supposed, I don't know if they're going to add sidewalks or what, but that's an issue that we need to look at.
Okay. We can check on that one, sidewalks. Thank you.
So project number eight, and actually, let me go back one second, just in case you weren't reading along. Generally, when we talk about new schools, we usually talk somewhere in the 60-plus range for number of cars to queue onsite. So some of these have more towards the 6 to 10 range versus the 60 range. So there are some strategies that we can employ about double stacking and those kind of things to help support that at the maximum opportunity. Moving back to university high school, this is with respect to the cafeteria, is right now, when we, when you look at planning, it was identified that there's concern regarding the size and availability to support dining within that facility. So from a planning aspect, if we were designing a school and we were looking at a 2,000-student high school, we would generally plan for one-third of the student population to be in the cafeteria at one time, if you weren't implementing like dispersed dining, off-campus dining, those type of strategies. So that would represent a 12,667-square-foot cafeteria. Right now, the existing cafeteria is just shy under 8,800 square feet. There are seven serving lines, one coffee shop. So to align to that standard to a single, or one-third lunch with a single location, we propose to do a 4,000-square-foot addition to fully support the capacity at that school. And you will see in the diagram, there's kind of two, kind of wedge shapes there that you could potentially fill in and surround two of those serving lines to give that 4,000 square feet to the campus. Right now, we're estimating that one would be about 2.4 million dollars and take about 18 months to build. Project number nine is Waco High School Band Hall. So as we toured the facilities, the band hall is one that has a little bit special need. It is currently located, as you look at the facilities, almost dead center in the campus, and it appears that it has had seen multiple histories within usage, and is currently the band hall. And they have split practice rooms, the band hall, and then some adjacent spaces as storage. And so right now, the proposal could be to build, to replace that 11,000-square-foot facility. It's not necessarily optimally used, but if we were programming a new high school, that space would be about 10,000 square feet. So that red block, again, that you see on there, the idea would be is we would want to locate it somewhere probably in and around the auditorium area. We would want to consider the future vision of the campus, how that plays into it, those type of elements as we move forward. But the idea was, is that it's co-located with some of the other visual and performing arts spaces. Here, that one would be 4.7 million dollars, and would take about 24 months to build, design and build. And then the final, I'll say, project, which is really more of a conceptual idea, is exactly to some of the things that you've identified and noted about site sizes. And that's really, as the district continues to look at facilities, whether it's elementary school through high school, when we talk about purchasing the site, or looking at some of the existing sites, when we look at planning capacity, elementary schools, we generally look for 15 to 20 acres, middle schools 40 to 50 acres, and high schools 80 to 100 acres. That's to provide not only the facility needs from a physical facility side, opportunity for growth, parking at the high school level, athletic facilities, and then as well as stormwater management and detention, which is becoming ever more important as we, Atlas 14 is kind of the big topic around these days, and the impact of rainwater in the Texas region, really, that becomes impactful. Right now, I've just got an estimated cost of, you know, if you were paying $30,000 or $40,000 an acre, what that would mean in dollars. But ultimately, that would be between the district and a real estate agent to be able to work through of what those costs would be. So if you've had your calculator out, and you've been totaling here along the way, you look at the total of these, the strategic capital improvement projects are around 35 to 40 million dollars in total project cost. I'd note, again, that they're conceptual in nature. Next step would really to be go through a design process and really hone in on the design solution. But ultimately, we're looking, would look for a direction from the board on any particular project that you want to study further, move off the list, add to the list, such as Brook Avenue, and be able to address those things within the design.
I have a thought. First of all, I want to thank you for the work. But what strikes me is, well, how great our need is, number one, because I know that this is kind of the tip of the iceberg when it comes to our facilities. But some of these really break my heart, because as a parent with students who have participated in several of the programs here, when you don't have adequate facilities, your kids are at such a disadvantage, not only when it comes to instruction, whether it be in athletics, and I see Coach Love over there, but then in fine arts. And then it makes it hard for our kids to compete because our facilities don't allow them to receive the same instruction and support that students in other districts with facilities that, when you're looking at the gym at Providence Heights, you even have room. But then there's safety concerns with all these portables, and you just think how much time has changed, when a portable used to be an option. And with safety concerns now, like, I think maybe Mr. Manning, there's really not even an option anymore, because how do you keep kids as safe as we want to keep them while they're with us? So I appreciate the work that's gone into it, and I don't know what you're proposing our next steps be, Dr. Kinkanen, but a lot of work to be done here.
Well, we do have a budget presentation this evening, but I'll just tell you, we, you know, we're around that $10 million. Cheryl will explain it later, but we've identified about $10 million where we could move forward, 10 to 12, where we could move forward with some items on the list. And I, you know, I think number four is an item that we'd want to go ahead and start looking at designing, because we do need to take care of that. That facility is in poor shape. But then beyond that, you know, we could tackle any of these projects, or we could save them for future bond program. Portables, I think we should, you know, we need to look at those, definitely. Gymnasiums are good bond projects, generally. So really, just wanted to get a sense of where you all, what you all thought were the priorities. You certainly know these schools and the community better than I at this point. So I just wanted to hear your thoughts, what you think rises to the top for you. Or if there are some projects that we have failed to identify, we could have put another 10 or 20 projects on the list. These were just some of the initial projects that we thought of. And then Jared's going to speak to a bigger strategic plan for facilities. But I'm used to having a maintenance projects list that goes into your annual budget, and then the strategic capital improvement projects list, which are these bigger ticket items that you can begin to tackle as you get funding, have a funding available for them. So. So any thoughts by the board?
Yeah, I'd just like to tell you, I appreciate the presentation, Jared, and the fact that this is, like the superintendent said, a work in process. I mean, it's kind of laying the groundwork for several, I anticipate more discussions of a more detailed nature as you work through the process. But as I see the numbers review this, I would certainly suggest to Coach Love that he buys several boxes of number-two pencils to justify these items. So, because there's, there's a lot of identified projects that will be very, very important, that not only affects safety, but also the academic and athletic side of our students. So I look forward to more discussions on narrowing down those scopes, or at least, you know, building those scopes into prioritized lists.
Yeah, Mr. Manning.
Well, our goal is to make Waco Independent School District the district of choice for local areas. These are things that have to be done. These are the things that will attract people to come in to support us. But like I say, it starts, it starts right now. But it needs to be done. I've spoken to Coach Love about some of the things he wants to do and everything. And if we want, if we want Waco Independent School District to improve, we have to do it. And I think the 2020 census is going to give us a little shock on what's happening here in Waco. So we have to, we have to be prepared for it.
Yes, Ms. Corderman.
I appreciate all of the work that you guys have put into this, and the thought, and even the fact that you had talked about going back to the campuses and actually talking to them and making sure this fits with their vision. I appreciate that, because I think kind of the boots-on-the-ground kind of know how it works best. So it's always, I appreciate you taking time to, that means something in your plan to do.
Absolutely.
I think for the administration, I, you know, I'm thinking if we have, you know, and this is probably going to come later in the budget, but if we've got a certain allocation right now, obviously, the Paul Tyson Field Replacement is something that needs to be done. But this site access improvement, I think, is just a very, it's low-hanging fruit. It's one where we're making sure that kids are safe, we're making sure teachers are safe, and parents are safe in pickup. And it seems like it's a lower-budget item that can really help with the safety of our kids. And I think, you know, being, you know, Mr. Manning was talking about Brook Avenue, but I think of a lot of campuses, and I know that Dr. Kinkanen, you know, you've told me the same thing, that there really is traffic flow and access is really dangerous, specifically for a lot of, what I've seen is elementary campuses and the middle school campuses as well, because although we tell them to look both ways before they cross the street, that's not always what they do. So I think just, that would be my kind of two cents for the administration, is that, to me, seems like something that's probably a little bit more urgent, to make sure that our kids, our parents, and people on campus are safe in their kind of going and coming from school.
Yeah, and I think if we chose that one, we might want to make sure that those are, that the ones we start with are campuses that might not be changed with any other changes that might come, as Jared continues the facility study review. So we might begin to work at tackling some of those. And then some campuses that might need other changes, we might pause while we study the, a strategic plan for future bond program, essentially, when we get there.
I have a question. Yeah. So this Providence, the Providence Heights gym, I, as critical of a need as it is, obviously, I feel like you could probably pull up, I don't want to put a number on it, but I'm just thinking, we probably have a number of elementary schools that have similar spaces with as high a need. So how did Providence Heights make this particular list, this gym at Providence Heights? Yeah.
So it is part of, so heard communication from the facility staff, and some of the needs that they have communicated, as well as then the superintendent, and specifically, as I understand, there's a child who has a specific need at this campus currently. So that's why it has elevated that loud, that loud at this point. But there are, just as you noted, Brook Avenue is the exact same campus. But then, as we toured the facilities, two of the highest needs areas are most consistently needed, where gymnasiums and libraries, that you see a lot of variation just at the elementary school level, from that, about size, and location, access, those type of elements. school level from that, about size and location, access, those type of elements. So I think a lot of what you're having on, Mr. Manning, I think to your question earlier about keeping things in focus along with the broader vision, as the district does look forward, and I think really at the will and direction of the board, you know, we would suggest that a Waco ISD facilities master plan would really start bringing those elements into vision to be able to support some of these decisions. And I would propose that there are four main elements that would really be part of this. The first is the facility assessment, which is just that about what is the current status of the existing facilities within Waco ISD? And the idea is, in essence, what, how are the systems being supported? What is the rest of their useful life? And then ultimately, what is the replacement cost? That is a study that is currently being undertaken by Alpha Facilities, and some of that information is starting to feed into the systems of the maintenance department and being integrated. So you should start seeing some reports coming out of that here in the coming months from that standpoint. I think one of the keys, so you can kind of understand that one, is it's replacing like for like in that one. So if you have as simple as a fourteen-seer mechanical unit, it's replacing it with a fourteen-seer mechanical unit. You're not improving efficiency, you're addressing code at that time. It's a concept that we'll talk about more as those results come in. Another component of that, and I think it's several of the things that you talked about, is educational suitability, but ultimately, all those factors of how facility supports the education of our students, the ability for our teachers to teach. So that's furniture, that's lighting, as simple as can you turn off the row in front of the projector or the TV to be able to create that right environment to support students? Getting into some of the facilities, you've mentioned athletic facilities, but ultimately, what is that educational vision? What is that ideal graduate look like? How can we support them? What CTE courses are we offering? Do we have the facilities to support those CTE offerings? Are those two things parallel? And then the last element of that would be is demographics and capacity, and we kind of touched on that with the portable discussion, but ultimately, what is the enrollment and the projections at the campus? How are the facilities being able to support that? So as you bring those four elements together, it really gives you the lenses to be able to start making those smart and strategic decisions about moving forward with facilities, making sure you have a good long-term investment in the facilities, you're painting a bright future for the students and the stakeholders of Waco ISD. So if you so chose, you know, we'd look for a direction on how the board would like to move forward with that, who would like to be involved from our process community, how deep and how long, in essence.
There's a lot of, besides that crazy I-35 that I borrow all the time, there's a lot of work going around here in Waco, and I think we need to touch bases with them. I know there's a lot of improvements going on on Elm Street, there's improvements going on back downtown and everywhere, almost everywhere you write, not everywhere, but a lot of places. And I think we need to check with the city to see what kind of projects they got, especially anything that they're going to do around our schools and everything, and especially the schools that may need sidewalk, sidewalk improvements and things like that. Because of the fact, like you said, safety, safety first, especially at our elementary schools. So I would suggest that, you know, we find somebody who can go and talk to them and try and see what they got going on, and we try to coordinate like we are with the joint thing we do during.
We actually did hear a report from the city last week on some safety routes to school, schools grants that they submitted recently, and I'm trying to, J.H. Heinz, thank you for remembering, was a grant that was approved by TechStot, I believe, for funding for sidewalks. They, the city did submit a number of grants, and of course, they weren't all awarded. But that's a great point, we need to continue to coordinate. I don't know of any other projects around the school, but we'll certainly keep that conversation open.
Yeah, to speak to that meeting, there were a couple other campuses, I know Provident Heights was one of them, and some other campuses that they have grants that they've written, and so they're waiting to hear back, and it'll be a couple more months before they hear back whether they've gotten them or not. But they did get the one for J.H. Heinz, and so I know that the city is, that's on their docket, and they're aware of it. I think Alta Vista was also one of them that, yeah, that also, they had gone out for a grant.
So I think all of this to say, we want to get started, to your point, Mr. Manning, earlier, is that we have a lot of things underway that we're studying, but there are some areas, some places we can start immediately to begin the work with some funding that we have. And so, so I would ask that you all allow us to move forward with at least that number four, Paul Tyson, to bring back some additional information to you so we can keep that moving for that partnership with the city and the county. And then if you want to tackle, we can begin to work a little bit deeper on those site access improvements, unless there are other projects you would put ahead of that.
Dr. Kincaid, I'm in favor of that, of the number four, but I think we need to also, wouldn't that be the project we need to look at, I guess, the completion of the, I guess, the land swap piece of it, and what monies are going to be made available through that exchange, if you will? Would that be correct in terms of offsetting some costs?
That is correct.
That's correct.
Right now, our costs that we presented are what I consider fully burdened costs by the district. There would be funds coming from the campus.
And those would be good numbers to bring forward with that priority on number four. I agree.
Happy to do that. Great, so I'm hearing some direction on studying number four further, some design work with Jared.
And I think I'm also hearing a prioritization of safety, and so.
Portables and.
Portables and access.
Access, okay. Very good.
Well, again, I thank y'all very much for your time tonight and welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, Jared. Good work, and probably next month, huh?
Yes, ma'am.
Looks like it. Looks that way.
Thank you.
Well, next on our agenda are campus improvement plans. We're, is that where you want to go, or, you know, I see that Ms. Davis is following campus improvement plans, and now we all have money on the brain, so we'll be ready for that, too.
Okay, so you all received a copy of all of the campus improvement plans, and those are posted on the website. Our principals have finalized those for this school year, and I'm just really proud of them. They've done a fantastic job. Those plans are in really great shape. They're aligned to the district improvement plan, and so I hope that as you had the opportunity to skim them, because there are a lot of pages there that you saw, the alignment to the work that's happening in the district with instruction, with DDI and action coaching, and some beginnings of some of the work that we want to do with safety. Of course, they're all personalized to their campuses with that cohesive, those cohesive threads of the district improvement plan in them. So tonight, we want to present those to you for your approval.
Anybody have any questions, comments? Mr. Sykes.
Yeah, and Dr. Kincaid, as I go through the campus improvement plans, I just, the first thing I noted was, like you said, it looks like extensive alignment with what we have defined as our district goals, and those threads permeate, as I look at them extensively through the campus plans, their individual goals, their performance objectives seem to be at a level which I don't recall seeing at this level of detail before. And I compliment you and your staff and the principals and their staff. I think it's a very excellent package that you put together. Certainly, I know others looking forward to achieving the results as outlined because they are no doubted, no doubt, very aggressive. And I think there's an, there's an element of urgency in the plans, which I do appreciate. And I think that this bodes well for bringing all those elements together in a very unified manner across the district, and compliments to the principals because the plans are at a level which I don't think we've seen before, and it marks, I think, a new level of excellence that Dr. Kincaid and your staff are certainly pressing towards the district. So, thank you.
I want to appreciate our district-level staff who assisted as well. There were lots of hands touching these plans, and there was a lot of effort that was put into making sure that they were really good working plans to move forward with, and then we'll continue to refine them as we move forward.
Anybody else have any more discussion or comment?
I just want to say that I appreciate, just like the district plan, and I think Mr. Manning was the one who said at the time, "These make sense. I can read these, and these make sense." And I have to say, for years of reading campus improvement plans, that at least didn't make sense to me, the layperson. I really appreciate it and can see that staff's focused on real improvement, and I, it's obvious this took a lot of time and effort, and that, like Mr. Sykes said, we all share the sense of urgency to improve. So I just want to thank the principals and our administrators who are here tonight for their work.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, or are we ready for a vote? I'll entertain a motion if so.
I move that we accept the campus improvement plans as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. Thank you, Mr. Manning. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Item 10, review and discuss fund balances of fiscal funds. Ms. Davis. I haven't been able to see you since you've been behind the post, but have been curious.
I've been looking forward to it. I might have stretched her dollars a little. I've stretched her a little.
Okay, so I'm going to try to go through this pretty quickly because I know it's late. Usually this time of year, I try to update us. Last month, we had our annual financial report, and so I kind of want to follow up and kind of let you know where we ended up, why we ended up, and kind of what we have available as far as fund balance going into our next year. This is just the results of our operations in the general fund. We ended up, you can see kind of there in the middle of the page where I have that five point two million dollars circled, we basically ended up last year adding five point two million dollars to our fund balance. This is a lot higher than it has been, and it's primarily, if you look up there on that top line with that circle, four point one million of that was additional revenue. So our expenditure estimates were fairly close. I mean, we always underspend some, underspent one point three million from our original budget, but that four point one million, we're going to talk about in just a few minutes as far as what made up that money. Below the five point two down there, you see the four point five million. Now, that amount in our ending fund balance was either unspendable, and we'll talk about those categories just briefly, unspendable, it was restricted, it was committed or assigned. So that left us down at the bottom, the forty-four point seven million of unassigned fund balance, which is free to do whatever we need to do as a district. So if you look at this, this is kind of our trend in revenues and expenditures over the last few years, and you see that difference. The expenditures on the orange line are going about the same kind of pattern we would normally expect, but those revenues in this past year greatly increased, and there's, some of that was a one-time increase that will not recur, and some of that is, of course, recurring or even grown with HB3. As we ended up the school year, and this shows what our unassigned fund balance is, and we always, at this point, will quote that unassigned fund balance as a percent of the subsequent year's budget. So that's kind of where we start out for the year. Our budget went up about twenty million dollars this year, so that brings that, even though the fund balance went up, the percent goes down just a bit because the budget is so much larger. So we ended up this past year with about a twenty-seven percent unassigned fund balance. With the budget, the top line you see is a budgeted fund balance, the twenty-four percent. Of course, as we know, you know, we'll have some under expenditures there, and that should end up a little bit higher by the end of the year, unless we draw it down for some projects. And this kind of shows what that fund balance looks like as far as our, like I said, those other categories of fund balance are outside the assigned fund balance. Our 2015, 16 year was probably the largest year that, that we had other categories of fund balance. That was, as I told Dr. Kincaid, that was when maintenance was trying to learn how to work with us, and we had lots of projects that didn't get finished during the summer and kind of carried over each year. This year, as I said, was four point five million. Most of that this year was for purchase orders that were issued and were not received by August 31st. And here's kind of that list of what those things are, our categories, that nonspendable fund balance, most of that's in inventory. That becomes part of your fund balance, but because it's already tied up in items that have been purchased and put into inventory, you can't spend it. The restricted amount that you see, that million one, that is, under the contract with the 1882 schools, they are, they get to keep their revenues that they generate under the state foundation school program, and anything that they don't spend at the end of the year is restricted for their use. So that's what that one point one million dollars represents. That's what they underspent in the 2018, 19 school year, and was restricted for them to use in the current year, or future years. And then we had our five hundred and seventy thousand is still left in our capital expenditures. A little bit of that was for some camera servers that was carrying over, that we had not done a BO for yet. Most of that was for the bus money, as we've sold buses over the years, and we put them in our bus replacement fund and then use them to purchase buses, or to supplement our annual budget for purchasing buses. The other committed, that, as I said before, those are purchase orders that were outstanding. A lot of those were for projects that we started last summer that we had issued purchase orders for, but they were not completed at August 31st. So again, those, all of those items plus the forty-four point seven unassigned fund balance equals our forty-nine point two total fund balance. This is, as I said, most of the difference in what we had originally estimated and where we ended up was in revenues. As you can see, we had a lot more earnings on investment last year, went up about five hundred thousand over what we had projected based on the previous year. That was mostly due to the increased interest rates last year, but we were keeping our money invested to take advantage of those rates. So as you can see, we ended up earning one point four million dollars in investment income last year. I wish I could say that was the same this year. It's going down. We were losing five basis points each day this week. We had a bank failure last week that we had a CD, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar CD in, that was covered by FDIC insurance, so we were able to redeem that, and we had our money back within two days, and it was reinvested. But since then, we've had three different occasions where we were getting ready to buy a CD, and the bank pulled out after they quoted us rates. So the market's a little shaky right now, but we're still trying to keep our money invested safely insured by FDIC insurance. The next item is two point four million in our foundation school program that went up. Two main reasons for that, one was special education. We generated almost a million dollars in special, additional special education funds. That was because the state had lifted the cap on the identification of special ed students, and we were identifying students, and that resulted in about nine hundred and seventy-six thousand. And then comp ed. Last year was the year we did community eligibility program for the first time. We were not sure, as we developed the budget, exactly how that would impact our comp ed funding because we no longer had free and reduced lunch, approved lunch applications, and that's what comp ed funding had been based on. And we didn't get real clear direction from TEA on that, so we were a little concerned, we were conservative. we were conservative in estimating that, but we did end up generating quite a bit more money because of the community eligibility program, so we got an extra 675,000 there. The federal program revenue that you're going to see, most of that is not going to recur again. The indirect cost will probably get, depending on what the state approves for an indirect cost rate, but the E-rate money and the Shar's money, those additions are because the federal government accelerated their payments for those programs. They've always lagged way far behind in paying those reimbursements, but they accelerated that. The E-rate the year before was not even, we got it so late, we weren't able to book it in the 2017-18 year. We ended up having to book it in 1819, so we ended up with two E-rate reimbursements for our, this is mostly for internet providers, service and all. But those ended up in the same year last year. And again, on our Shar's reimbursement, same thing happened, our cost reimbursement settlement. It used to be in December, they have now accelerated that payment to June, so we ended up with two payments in this past fiscal year. You won't see that, that half million dollars there, you won't see again with those two items, because that was a one-time, timing difference. This is kind of what our historical tax collections look like. Once again, this past year, we had some real high adjustments after our values were certified. The, two years ago, that was about 318 million dollars in adjustments upward after certification. Last year, it was 227 million dollars upward after certification. So we've been kind of using that pattern, so I wouldn't have so much money left over at the end of the year. Unfortunately, those adjustments are only about 70 million this year, so I think I've kind of lowballed the adjustments. We're going to have a negative impact on that one. So you can see kind of how that, those adjustments impacted our collection rate, because that tax rate and those numbers were set based on the certified values, so it resulted in 104% collections two years ago and 102% collections this past year because of the increase in value. This is just kind of talking about where our appropriations were underspent. This is on the expenditure side. Of course, there's under expenditures all through the budget, significantly in instruction. You see our professional staff. I did budget for a 0.7% salary savings from vacant positions and hire more experienced teachers leaving and having to hire brand-new teachers. That traditionally has been about 0.7%, but in addition to that 0.7%, there was another 1.6% unspent, so we ended up with over 2% savings in our teacher salaries. Worse, on our instructional aids, I budgeted 4.5%, because that's what it has been for a couple of years. We underspent by another 6.5%. That means we had an 11% savings in what we budgeted for instructional aid. There was just a lot of turnover, a lot of vacancy in those positions. Again, the benefits, there's about 3.5%. That is part, a lot of it is because of the staff vacancies, and then some of it is in the group health plan. People that are waiving the plan or going with the spouses' plan. And then supplies and materials was almost 10% underspent from what was budgeted. And in other categories, utilities, we had about 675,000 underspent there. Couple of reasons there. We all bought some future years of electricity. We've got a really good rate, and then it was a very mild year, and so we, most of our savings is in the electricity area, and then we had some in water of about $100,000. Bus replacement fund, as we talked about earlier, that's some money that rolls forward every year, and then we had several projects that were not completed. The data storage replacement project that we, I think the board approved that amendment in late May, they got that bid and started, but did not complete that project by August 31st. And then there were some facilities projects and some of the safety projects with the cameras and servers. This is our administrative cost ratio, how we ended up last year. Little bit higher than the year before. It was in 2017-18 was probably the lowest it's been in a very long time. It was right at 8.5% that year. Last year was about 8.72%. I will say the 17-18, we had a lot of administrative vacancies that year, which probably helped with that, but remember that 1819 school year was the first year where the zone was operating, and you have some administrative, additional administrative staff that's in the zone. As far as a lot of the accountability, whether it's federal or whether it's state accountability, the five zone schools, our Waco ISD, and all of those numbers from the zone just come into our general fund budget for accountability purposes. This is our debt service fund, just to give you a little bit of an idea of where that fund is as you start talking about maybe long-range planning for facilities. We ended up 2018-19 up again about $300,000. Some of that was also, as you see, about 117,000 of that was in revenues because of investment income, because some of those properties where the adjustment in the property values were in the TIF, and so we had some increases there. But that's up about 283,000. We have an ending fund balance right at $4 million. If you recall, as we adopted the fund balance, or adopted the tax rate in August this past year, we did not reduce our tax rate for debt service, and we passed a resolution to defees $650,000 worth of bonds from the, that are due in 2038. That's the last, our bonds go out. So you can kind of see, we have a drop-off there in that 2038. Our prior chart would have been kind of straight across, and with that 650,000 that we just defees, it drops off a little bit in that year. We didn't get quite the savings that we had hoped to achieve. It cost us a little bit more in escrow than what we thought in August. Again, because of the interest rates going down, we're not able to invest those funds to earn quite as much as what we had planned in August. So we thought in August it would cost us about 773,000 to buy that. Debt, it ended up costing us about 790,000. So not a huge difference, about $17,000. But that transaction happened last week, so those bonds are paid and defeased, and we are going to try to do the same thing again this next year. And that's it, so if you have any questions.
Ms. President?
Yes, sir.
I know I've asked this before, so it won't be no surprise. Bus replacements. What was it, a couple of weeks ago, I seen on the world news about that bus got hit by a car or something, and the kids were just flipped all over. Have, is that, have we made any progress, I mean, even with the state or anybody, about getting seat belts on buses?
All our new buses have seat belts, do they not?
All the.
Since when did we start buying, you know?
I think it was about 2018, seat belts were required. I can't remember.
I think we actually started buying them with seat belts a couple of years before that more.
Year.
Yeah. So we've, for several years now, we're buying about seven buses a year.
And they all got seats.
And all the new buses we're buying have seat belts.
All the new buses are required to have seat belts.
Thank you.
And they have for about, like I said, about three or four years now, I think.
Okay, I just, thank you.
Any other questions? I lost one. All right, thank you, Ms. Davis. Ms. Cornblum. A through F accountability update. Part two.
Part two.
All right, while we pull that up, I'll just kind of, it's much of what you heard. I think it was December the last time I presented. This time, we just have some projections to how our 2020 accountability could look, and how our CCMR standings are looking to this point, even though there are some unknown factors in some areas. So if we could go ahead and go to the next slide, please. Oh, do I have it? Oh, maybe I'll go to the next slide. I didn't see it up here. Okay. I'm not going to spend a lot of time at this, on these slides. There are an exact duplicate of what we looked at in the fall, but just to kind of go back over them very quickly, just because accountability is confusing, and I, no matter how many times I hear it, it's still, I need to hear it again. So high schools looking at that student achievement rating, which is domain one, star counts is 40%, our college career military readiness, 40%, and then our graduation stands at 20% of that domain. And so just remembering back, CCMR and graduation rate both run a year behind the accountability year, and so for 2020, our accountability for the graduation and CCMR will be from our class of 2019. And so for graduation, we get to count the best of our four, five, and six-year graduation rates. So our indicators, as discussed last time, we know we can earn an industry-based certification. The coherent sequence of courses in CTE, last year, 2019, was the last year that students could count those and receive a half point for those. So this year in our 2020 ratings will be the last time we receive credit for students just taking a coherent sequence of courses without getting a certification. So now we have to, those students need to end up with an industry-based certification. So there is discussion that the commissioner might bring that back in and let us keep a half point, but that hasn't been decided, so at this point, we progress as if we don't have it going ahead in the future. Another area that I talked about last time were our students who receive special education services. They can be counted as CCMR-ready, based on certain criteria that we'll look at in just a second. You can earn a Level 1 or 2 certificate. Most of that is going to happen after high school graduation, so we won't have a lot of those. And then you can graduate under an advanced degree plan if you are a student who is identified as being in special education. So the 54s, the special education, students who are in special education, if they are employable and they have that job after high school, and they are not going to need any support via district, we may code them as a 54. And then if we have students who have demonstrated the ability to be employed without support, we can code them as a 55 and receive CCMR credit for those students. We previously, for last year's ratings, when we were looking at that, that was an area of deficit for us. We had not previously been coding those consistently, and so that's an area that we've really been working on, trying to capture those students. And then, of course, there's the students, if they graduate on an advanced degree plan, they can count as being college career military-ready there as well. So this is another area I brought up last time, that in the past, we were able to track students who showed a serious intent to enlist in the military, and we were supposed to be tracking that in some way. And so we would get letters from recruiters. When recruiters would come and visit campuses and talk to students, we would reserve their sign-in logs, different things like that, but that was kind of on a good faith type system. Now, this is where I talked last time, that we're really, the state is going to be looking at the students who actually enlist. So what will happen there, if they get this all coordinated, is that they'll look at their ASFAB if they pass. After they leave us, then they'll run those numbers against social security numbers or whatnot to see if they actually enlisted, and we'll only get credit for them if they did. Is what we're being told. I don't know that they have all the kinks worked out yet, but that's what we're being told. This is just reiterating that half point right now, last year, these are the students in our 2020 accountability ratings, the class of 2019, but this is the last year as it stands now, that will get that half point for students in a coherent sequence of CTE courses. And that just shows a chart of how that looks. So the methodology there, last year in the class of 2019, we had 900 graduates, and so we had 538 of those graduates that accomplished at least, or met at least, one CCMR indicator. And so it's just basic division, that's 60%, and what that scales to, TEA has a scaling tool, so you put in that 60%, and that comes out with a 90%. And so that really helped us as a district. That 90% was very important to our overall success rate in domains one and domains three in our accountability rating. So I don't think I can click on these. So as I talk, if you could just open the, I think you all have these in your packet as well. So you have hard copies, I believe, of these as well, but what we did is, we took the 2019 ratings, and these are, that's what we received on our taper. And so what we've done is, we've taken the projections from 2020 based on what we know about the class of 2019, and said, okay, if all else stood, what would we, what would we have in these areas right now? So do you have a hard copy of this sheet? Okay, all right.
It's at the end of the presentation.
Okay, it's in your presentation. Okay. So just looking at that, and going over it right now, if we look at 2019, we had 167 of our students who met that TSI criteria, so that was passing a TSI exam, meeting the TSI criteria on SAT, ACT.
Beginning on page 140 board. So you're looking at those charts there.
Yep. Shall I just keep going?
Keep going.
Okay.
I just wanted them to, I wanted them to get to the right spot.
All right. SAT, ACT, so forth and so on. So in 2019, we had 167 students who met both criteria in reading or math. In 2020, if we're looking at the class of 2019, so those, last year's class that we'll count in this year's ratings, we had 161 students who met both. As you go down, it breaks it down a little further, so if we look at the reading criteria, and it says met TSI criteria for at least one indicator, just reading, we had 388 students in 2019. Our class, or our 2020 ratings, what should be figured in there is that we had 321 students met. Of those, we had 304 that met the TSI criteria back in 2019. That was 322, so a little bit less there. And then when we look at the ACT and SATs, and you'll see this across the board, I don't know that I'll read just every single, each of these numbers, because you can look at these and review them, but what I do want to draw your attention to is met ACT criteria. So in 2019, we had 49, and in this year's accountability ratings, based on that 2019 class, we have 45 who met the ACT, and then 91 who met the SAT. We do focus a little bit heavier here on the ACT, I believe, but in any event, those are numbers that we want to grow. We really want to get those scores up in those areas, so that'll be a focus, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. Looking at our AP exams, we went for accountability in 2019 was 97. What we're looking at, and we think will be in our 2020 accountability, that number went down to 63. Dual credit in 2019. Dual credit in 2019 was one sixty-four, that actually went up to one seventy-seven. Industry-based certifications, you can see a significant increase there from eighty to one forty-two. Associate's degrees, I know when I presented this in the fall, there was a large, like, you know, we have our Accelerate Program, and we showed that we had two associate's degrees. So, right now, we're showing twenty-nine associate's degrees for the graduating class of 2019. So, that's a good improvement. Special, I'm on down near the bottom there, special education students with an advanced degree plan, eighteen, up to thirty-eight. You'll see on U.S. Armed Forces, we have seventy-nine back in 2019 for what would be on this year's accountability. We've zeroed that out, because they are not going to take from us, how we were originally counting, that good intent. And so, they'll track, if these students haven't enlisted, we won't get credit. So, we're, we're just acting like we don't have any in that area right now, because we don't know. They don't have that figured out. Met non-CTE criteria, so what that means is, in some way, they met one of the criteria above. So, any of the things I've just talked about. So, overall, we had three hundred and fifty-seven students who met one of the criteria above. Now, there, there could be overlap, they could have met it in one or more areas. So, that doesn't mean that there, those same students wouldn't be captured in, say, SAT and another area. And what we're looking at for 2020, we have three hundred and ninety-eight who met one of the above criteria. And then, CTE coherent sequence, we had a hundred and thirty-three in 2019. And then, from the, when I say 2019, it gets really confusing, I mean, the ratings. When we talk about 2020, we're talking about the class of 2019, but our 2020 ratings, we had a hundred and forty showing there. So, those one forty, they only count, and this is important, they only show up down there in that bottom number if they count in no other area up top. So, if we captured a point for them in any of the areas that I've talked about until this point, they don't show up at the bottom. So, right here, we have a hundred and forty, those are actually points, half-points really, that we're collecting from coherent sequence. And so, that's a number, as I said last time, that we really need to be working on and find other ways for those students to achieve that status. So, next, on the others, if we open the other documents, I just have them in order from Brazos to University. And so, I can just kind of give you a moment to look it over, unless, do you want me to point out each area? Okay. So, when we do that at Brazos, we see that we have a large number of our students who really aren't meeting the CCMR criteria there. The next, the next paper in your packet would be UHS. And when we look at UHS, we see, I'm just going to go all the way down to the bottom, because that kind of sums it up, met non-CTE criteria, so they met any of the criteria above. We had two twenty who met that criteria. And what's important to know here as well, and again, that might not be just single students, because they could be more, more than one category, but we had nine hundred graduates last year, overall, as a district. And I would have to look at UHS numbers, but if we went back and looked at that district number, we had three hundred and ninety-eight students who met CTE in an area on here, out of nine hundred of our students. So, when we look at UHS, we have two twenty who are meeting it in some way on the paper above the line. And then, at the bottom, those are half-points. So, we had sixty-six and a half points from coherent sequence of courses. So, they'd met it in no other way. So, you would multiply that by two to get the number of kids that fell into that category. And then, when we look at Waco High, a hundred and sixty-nine students. And the reason those are students and not points is because anything above that line is a point, one point. And one point represents a student. So, there's a hundred and sixty-nine there. And then, coherent sequence, that would be seventy-three and a half. So, if you multiplied that by two, that would be the number of students who had to get their CCMR credit by a half-point, because they had no other way of reaching that. So, we see we still have a lot of students who are falling into that category. And so, we need to, we need to begin thinking about that. The thing with that is, that, that really isn't something that you can just correct during a student's senior year, always, right? Because that's something that we have to be watching from their freshman year, and ensuring that they're headed in the right courses, if they've dropped a course, or whatever they're doing, that we're pushing them in the right direction, so that they're getting what they need. And so, you know, for some students, by the time they get to their senior year, it might just not be possible if they haven't done the things prior to. So, if we can go back to the, to the slides. The next slide, what it's going to show, because also a part of that is just showing the overall score for the CCMR. So, Brazos is at twelve percent, that scales to them to sixty, or to seventy-six. Waco High, fifty-seven, which scales to an eighty-seven, and University, sixty-four, to a ninety-one. And that's the class of 2019 that will be figured into our 2020 ratings. So, looking at the next slide, the last time that I spoke to you, what I shared was the first two blue bars. And so, what we were looking at is, the lighter blue bar shows our class of 2018, basically, and what they received for coherent sequence courses. We looked at kind of the worst-case scenario and said, what would happen if that goes away? As right now, it's standing to go away after, after this year. What would the worst-case scenario be? And the darker blue bar shows what the rating would have been in that area without coherent sequence, if we didn't recapture them in some other way. The yellow bar shows where we are right now, based on all of the numbers that I just read to you, with the half-points still intact. And so, as you can see, for the 2020 accountability ratings, there's not a huge jump right now, because we're still able to capture those half-points. But, again, what we're concerned about is looking at the dark blue bars and what might be an issue if those students aren't taken care of in the future. Graduation rates, as I said, we get to use the best of four years. And so, University High School, there, for their 2020 accountability ratings, we would use the ninety-seven percent for them. Waco High School, we would use the six-year for them, which would be the eighty-five point two. But as you can see, after that six-year falls off, we have eighty-two and eighty-one. And so, that's important, because, of course, we don't know what this year will be. But, you know, our four will come five, five will come six. And so, depending on the other two graduation rates, the one that they were able to count last year and the one that they're going to be able to count for 2020, are higher than those two remaining. So, I don't know what, of course, their graduation rate will be this year, but that will become a factor for them in 2021. So, that's important. What, another thing that I want to note on these graduation slides is, once you get your graduation rate, that's the percentage we count. But TEA has another scaling tool that they put, you put this number in, and that percentage is not actually the percentage you get to count in your rating, because they expect graduation rates to be higher, and so, they account for that. So, when we're looking at, let me go back to University right quick. When we're looking at universities, their graduation rate is a ninety-seven percent, but that scales back to a ninety. Waco High Schools, at eighty-five percent, scales back to a fifty-five. And then, when we're looking at Brazos, Brazos High School, we would use their fifty-eight point five percent right now, which is a little bit concerning for the, what, you know, what's left over, depending on what this year's graduation rate's going to be, that'll count in the future. But, this is interesting, they scale to a sixty-five, because they're a credit recovery high school. They get a little bit of cushion in their, their scaling tool that the state uses for them. So, if, if nothing changed, we can't predict Domain Two or all of Domain Three, because we don't, that's growth, right? And we don't know how the kids are going to grow. You can't, you can't predict Domain Two right now, because that's relative performance. And so, that's how you stack up against other campuses similar to you. So, we won't know that. But, just looking at Domain One, if everything stayed the same in terms of student achievement. So, what we did is, we took the student achievement from last year, because we don't know what the student achievement from this year will be yet. Obviously, we're hoping that it will be better. But, if all things stayed constant, other than the graduation rates and the CCMR rates that I just shared with you, what are we looking at, kind of, when we're thinking about our, where we would, where we would be standing? So, as, as a, let me get my bearings right. So, when we look at Brazos High School, Brazos would basically stay in Domain One around a sixty-eight, so they would still be at a D where that was concerned in that area. Now, what brought them down was their Domain Three and their graduation rate, that really hurt them. University High School, last year in this domain was an eighty-one. They would go up to an eighty-three. So, for that area in the student achievement domain, they would still be considered a B. And then, Waco High School was a seventy-six last year, and in Domain One, they're showing down to a seventy-three. And they would be at a C, which is where they were. And that's still within that seventy, seventy-nine range is where they, where that stays. And then, Domain One for the district, then this is just Domain One, this isn't the whole, the whole overall rating. We, right now, are showing it a seventy-three, up from a seventy-two. And for Domain One would be a C, which is where we are right now as well. What's important to note here, though, is the important factor that student achievement does play, because that's based on the student achievement that we have right now, based on our last year's results, because that's the only number that we really have. But, what's important to know about that is that, heading into Domain Three, out of the twenty-three indicators that we could have gotten for student achievement as a district, we, we did not get any of the twenty-three indicators in student achievement. And so, what that tells us is that our sub-pop's aren't moving and aren't showing the growth that they need to show. So, our CCMR rates are standing pretty strong right now, and we've got to get that achievement up to match that. So, these are some things that we talked about last time that we were working on. Training counselors and registrars, that has already begun, especially in the area of counselors. Creating systems and processes, I know we've talked a lot about that. Dr. Cannon talks about that all the time, in just about every discussion that she gives. Senior transcript audit has happened, we've gone and looked at those seniors from this year to make sure that we don't have coding issues, that we don't have errors to where we really should be receiving credit in certain areas, and we aren't receiving them, because we aren't perhaps coding students correctly. Yearly post-secondary conferences, really starting with those students when they're freshmen, and not just looking at their transcripts, but having a personal one-on-one meeting with those students and talking about them, about what are your plans, are you still on track? Have, you know, have we failed a class, have we, you know, whatever? So that we're closing those gaps as they're happening. Instead of, like I said earlier, once they, once they get to that senior year, if we're not realizing this stuff along the way, sometimes it's not easy to correct. This also goes into our dropout prevention, because that's connected to our graduation rate. So, we've shared our dropout prevention plan. The dropout study, to my knowledge, hasn't begun yet. Teacher support and retention, that is a very large focus for us right now, because really, we have to create stability in that area to see the gains. Systems and processes for tracking and intervening with students, and then, again, those post-secondary conferences. So, some of this stuff already underway, some of it will be a couple-of-year process, honestly, to get it exactly to where, or more, to get it to where it needs to be. This is really, really preliminary, and I contemplated whether to put it in here or not, but I still wanted to kind of give you an idea, because a lot hinges on if certain things happen or don't. These are students who are our class of 2020 right now. So, we won't see the effects of these students until a year from now, in terms of when their college career military readiness points hit us. So, in our graduating class, as of this, this was, this was run in December, we had nine hundred and four students that would have counted. The thing about CCMR, it doesn't just, it's not snapshot like student achievement is. It's, if they're with us, they count for us. If they were here within the last six weeks of school, they're ours. So, if we're looking as a district, that Met Texas Students Success Initiative, that's those ACT, SATs, TSI. So, right now, as a district, as of December, there were ninety students who had already done that. Advanced placement, there were seventy-five who had already met that criteria. Certifications, we had a hundred and fifty-five. Dual credit, we had a hundred and twenty-seven students there. CTE, there are four hundred and seventy-six students who are in CTE courses. However, that's kind of the wild card factor, because we don't know, of those four hundred and seventy-six students, will they reach a certification or not? Exactly, right, I mean, there's things that have to happen. Our students who are in special education and receiving that advanced degree or being coded another way, we have fifty-one there. Military is showing, we went ahead, they were tracking that until the state, because that all happened this year. The state came and said, well, now, we're going to go and actually see if they enlisted or not. So, at the time, in the tracking, that's where we were sitting. But, we would zero those out now, because if they actually do track enlistments, we'll have to go off of that number. So, that was in December, obviously, with a lot of school left. And, like I said, some things have to happen, so I contemplated whether or not, but I kind of wanted to give you a, just a picture of where we are. This is how Waco High School looks right now, or as of, as of the time this was made. So, four hundred and fifteen met the, the TSI criteria, thirty-eight, advanced placement, thirty-nine. Licenses or certifications, sixty-eight, dual credit, fifty-one. Two hundred and sixty there, that's kind of up in the air. Advanced degree plans for special education students, twenty-seven, and then the military. So, really, that red pink part is the area that we need to, to be focused on and need to have a plan for in the future, to ensure that they are going to get certifications or that we're getting those in other areas. And then, University High School, four hundred and six. TSI, fifty-one, advanced placement, thirty-five, licenses, certifications, eighty-four, dual credit, seventy-five. And CTE, there are a hundred and eighty there, and then special education, twenty-four. And then, there's Brazos. So, there's that again. Any questions about that?
Yes, Mr. Saxon.
It's Cornblum. Regarding your planning ahead slide, I don't know if you can bring it back up.
Which one, I'm sorry?
Planning ahead.
Oh, I think I'm, I'm.
Okay, it's okay, that's okay. But, the comparison between CCMR and dropout prevention, the CCMR includes training for counselors and registrars. I'm wondering if there's any involvement on it, from a training standpoint, for counselors and registrars regarding dropout prevention?
Yes, it could be in both categories.
Okay. And I didn't know if that was included in dropout prevention plan, kind of embedded, or what?
Yes, and, and really, our dropout prevention plan, when we look at it, is tied directly to. is tied directly to the initiatives in our district plan. And that is one of the areas in, in our district plan. So, yeah, it all, it all is completely connected. And so if we're doing these things on this side, then that's going to improve the outcomes on the other side.
But it's all, like she said, it's all connected. We have to attack it from multiple fronts, from coding to counselors to classroom instruction. And so it's a, it's a, we gotta move the needle.
Knowing where those kids are every day and what's happening with them. And, and, you know, for dropout prevention, are they with us? You know, when a student has not been at school for however long, um, are we, you know, are we finding them? Do we know where they are? If they've left us, are we coding that correctly so that, that isn't counted against us? Um, and really ensuring that there are people in the building who know. And helping the kids know that there are people in the building who know. If I'm not there, then I know someone's gonna miss me. You know, and that makes a difference. When a kid knows that someone's gonna miss them, and that really backs down to that relationship piece, which is a whole different conversation we could have. But when I know someone's going to miss me and who, and is interested at whether I'm at school or not, that makes a difference. And so I'm not saying we don't do that, but that's, that is important. And so we, we have to ensure that we're doing that for all students. Okay.
All right. Dr. Ken Cannon.
So the next item, um, is, um, connected. Um, the state is now requiring that school boards adopt goals for CCMR. Um, those have to be five-year goals. Um, they have to re, be reviewed annually at a public meeting. They have to be posted, um, and they have to be, um, specific and quantifiable. So, um, we're presenting some goals for you. There's a one-pager at the back with those goals. Um, the recommendation by the state was that they align to the higher ed coordinating board, sixty by thirty Texas goal that at least sixty percent of Texans, um, ages thirty, twenty-five to thirty-four, have a certificate or a degree by twenty thirty. And the school finance commission recommended, um, that we have a goal of sixty percent for all high school seniors graduating without the need for remediation and achieving the, um, industry-accepted certificate or enrolling in post-secondary education or enrolling in the military. So we were a little high, um, primarily due to the good work in CTE. We were sitting at fifty-eight percent. So we, um, went above that sixty percent goal to sixty-five percent and said that the percentage of graduates that meet the criteria for CCMR will increase from fifty-eight percent to sixty-five percent by August of 2024. Um, that's at the top of that colored, uh, page that you have there with the orange, um, starting with sixty percent in 2020 and moving up to sixty-five percent. And then we have that broken down by subgroups all the way across. Um, and we just didn't, you know, we have some subgroups that are lower. We just didn't want to start any lower than that. So we may not make all of those targets, but we, um, certainly want to. Um, then there's a professional development plan and some progress monitoring that is required. So we recommend that you review these annually as required by TEA. Um, we have all, we have goals in the district improvement plan to improve CCMR. Um, when we work on next year's, we can include our targets since we'd already presented that to you in November. And then you can see the number of professional development activities that we have identified to work on CCMR that are, um, included in district and campus improvement plans. There is some money for CCMR bonus funding. We're still, um, understanding that from the state and more information will come out about that. So, um, we'll bring that to you when we have it. But at this time, we recommend, um, that the board adopt the CCMR goals as presented.
Do you hear a motion? Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Dupuy. Thank you, Mr. Manning. All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Ms. Cornblom.
All right. We are now going to move, um, and take a look at our, um, early childhood program. And so this is an area where we are excelling. And we have a number of our early childhood teachers and coaches. They came and stayed late just to hear this. Yeah. And as well as when we get to community partners. We have, um, several community partners in the room as well. So, um, talking about, um, early childhood. So, um, we, we have, um, full-day, um, pre-kindergarten in our district, which is, um, we're really fortunate to have that. With the passing of House Bill Three, we, um, districts are now required to have full K, full K. It's getting late. Full-day pre-K. Um, and we already did. So that is a celebration. Um, to qualify for pre-K, there are actually seven criteria, um, which, those are in your memo. I won't go through all of those, but the majority of our students, um, qualify because they are unable to speak or comprehend the English language or because they are educationally disadvantaged. And so most of ours, um, qualify there. So any, um, child who meets those qualifications and who is at least three years of age or older qualifies for free pre-K. So with that being said, we do offer it. Now, we do offer pre-K to some students on a tuition basis if they do not qualify for pre-K. And so, um, the board approved the amount for that back in March, um, of two thousand nineteen. And so if you want to come to Waco ISD pre-K and you don't qualify, that tuition rate is five thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars, um, to allow you to do that. And of course, that is if we have the space because, of course, our qualifying students would come first. All right. So what we're going to look at tonight is, um, our enrollment, curriculum and instruction accountability, our highly qualified staff who are with us, and then, um, community partnerships. And then just a little bit about House Bill Three. So looking at enrollment, um, we can see, and this is kind of interesting. Now, this is of snapshot, so, um, those kids could have been recaptured. But back in two thousand sixteen, we had nine hundred and seventy-six students enrolled. For whatever reason, there was a little dip there in the seventeen, eighteen school year. But again, that's a, about thirty students. And they could have actually, um, been enrolled later, but this was of snapshot. And then eighteen, nineteen, nine ninety-two. And then this year, again, we are at nine ninety-two. So we have a healthy enrollment for our pre-K. This is really strange. Every slide is duplicated on this. So I'm just gonna click twice. Um, so the number of classrooms, you can see that this is, um, how we kind of break down. We have, um, in our pre-K three classrooms, we have a dual-language classroom, one bilingual classroom. I mean, those are three, um, pre-K three programs. And then our pre-K four, we have twenty-nine standard classrooms. Bilingual classrooms, we have nine. And we have four headstarts where we partner with EAOC. This was really interesting as well because, um, with House Bill Three, if we want to add new kindergarten, or not kindergarten, pre-K classes, we have to try to partner with other, um, accredited, high-quality childcare centers before we would increase space. Now, increasing space does not mean that we would use an existing classroom on a campus that already had one. But that would mean if we decided to take a school building and open up pre-K in a school building that didn't originally have classrooms, we would, we would be directed to do that first. But we are already, we already have partnerships, so that's great. But we're not, we're not looking to do that right now anyway. But the, House Bill Three is encouraging you to partner with, um, with your local childcare agencies for that. So we have four headstarts, um, and those are at, um, South Waco and West Avenue. Our pre-K four Kinder classes, we have one bilingual. Um, that bilingual class is at West Avenue. And it is a, a blend because their kindergarten is small and their bilingual is small. And so they don't have the numbers, and so they combine that into one. And so the teacher does teach both curriculums. Um, there's extra help in the room, and they really do divide the room. And so if I'm a pre-K student in that classroom, then I will be with that teacher next year for Kinder as well, which I think has its benefits. Um, and then our pre-K, um, three, can, four Kinder classrooms, we have eight of those and then two bilingual, um, for a total of ten. And a lot of, a lot of those there are gonna be at Lake Air Mount Montessori because they're following that Montessori model. All right. So curriculum and instruction. So when we, um, talk about curriculum and instruction for, um, pre-K, they have ten domains that their pre-K standards fall under. All of those are aligned with our Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills to ensure that we're teaching in the right direction. So those, when those students get into the older grades, that their learning is vertically aligned. So the icons, um, there on the slide show the programs that we use. So we have developing talkers, which is a program that we use for oral language. We use STEM scopes for science. Um, conscious discipline, we use to develop the social-emotional skills for our students. And for our pre-K students, that's usually a big area because this is the first time for many of them that they've been in a setting like this. Um, Frog Street, um, we're using that for our reading and math. Um, the Children Learning Institute, we have, that is being used for language literacy, math practice, and it offers hands-on activities, um, that our teachers can use to plan lessons with. And so those are our main pieces of curriculum that we use. When we look at accountability, um, we test in a couple of different areas as you, well, not areas, but in a couple of different ways. So we use CLI Engage. On the direct assessment side, those are actually assessments that our pre-K teachers sit with our students one-on-one and assess the students in these areas. The observables are more things, um, oh, for instance, do I hold a book correctly? Because those are even pre-reading strategies. When a student comes to school, if they know how to hold a book, that's actually a, an indicator of early reading behavior. So do I hold it upside down? Do I hold it this way? We can observe those things. Do I know how to hold my pencil correctly? Um, and so those are a part of those observables that they use. These things are actually reported, um, in the early childhood data system to TEA. And so, um, even at the pre-K level, we are reporting progress. And so, um, what our, our, our teachers do and, um, and what Ms. James does when we're looking at how we incorporate our professional development is we really look and we see how are our kids doing in these areas? Because just like in other grades, when we use assessment, we're seeing, you know, where are our, where are our scores lower? Where are they higher? Because that indicates professional development needs. And they really try to design their professional development around these areas and use that. The other thing about CLI Engage, um, we're only required to report this at the beginning and end of the year. Our scores here, Waco ISD chooses, though, to test beginning, middle, and end because we want to ensure that we're mapping that growth. Um, and then the program is really good because once we get those, um, results back, it gives us ideas for interventions, um, it shows alignment. So if a student is here, it'll show alignment to the other standards, kindergarten, first grade, and so forth on up. Um, there's a good parent piece. And so at each time, it will send, it gives you a parent report that you can send to parents to tell them how they can help their children at home. And then there's even, um, it can be sent through email to where they can access those pieces electronically. So videos and different things that might be in their plan. So, um, another, I think, really good factor about this is that it norms it based on their age. So if I am, I might, I, I qualify because I'm three, but I don't turn four till later. When they run the results, it's gonna norm those results based on where I should be developmentally. And so that, that is good. A good, a good benefit, I guess. Um, so when we look at our accountability, um, in these areas, um, we can see from, this is our two thousand eighteen, nineteen data, that at the beginning of the year, when our, um, pre-kers came in, their emergent reading behaviors, thirty-two percent. At the end of the year, they were at ninety-one. Language, thirty-eight, up to seventy-three. And math, seventy-four to ninety-three. And that's, that's really significant. And that reflects high-quality instruction and a focus on growing these students. And so we're really proud of that. And this is really a bright spot, um, for what's happening, um, in our school system. When we look at, um, Kinder readiness, this is also a pretty, um, cool thing to look at. So what this is saying is when these students leave pre-K and they enter kindergarten, the blue bar on the left are our numbers. So this is if a student attended at least eighty days of pre-kindergarten. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that they attended eighty days with us, but they attended eighty days. Then when they first enter kindergarten and do that kindergarten readiness assessment, where are they sitting? So our students, as you can see, in all of the years, were higher than the state in terms of kindergarten readiness. And so that's very commendable. The other thing that we looked at that's not reflected into this slide, if we looked at all kindergartners, we didn't go to pre-K, just all kindergartners in the state and how our students performed as compared to those. Our students who went to pre-K, there was an even bigger gap. Um, our students performed even better. So that is a celebration. We also track, um, looking at how, how they're doing in pre-K, what benefit. You know, we know that having kids begin school ready has, is a good indicator of their success in future grades. So our students in math, who, as you see on the green, who did not attend a Waco ISD pre-K, when we look at their star math scores in third grade, ninety-four, um, percent of those students were at meets. However, of the, or ninety-four students, not percent. When we look at those students in Waco ISD, we had a hundred and sixty-six. So of the kids who attended, um, we are, um, surpassing, not the state, I said that wrong, I'm sorry, did not attend pre-K in Waco ISD or did attend Waco and pre, or, did not attend pre-K in Waco ISD or did. And so in third grade of our students who did attend here, um, we surpassed the students who did not. And then third grade reading, similar results. Our students who attend pre-K in Waco ISD, when they reach their third-grade scores, are outperforming students who did not. So our high-quality staff, there is a lot that goes into high-quality staff. Um, because at the pre-K level, um, there are some, some stiff requirements on them. They have to receive a hundred and fifty hours of professional development over a five-year period of time. And then a part of that, um, has to be coaching as well. And so we have fifty-three highly qualified pre-K teachers. Um, when we look combined, then that, this is this year, this is now, we have two thousand seventy hours of professional development and coaching. And each teacher, on average, has about thirty-nine hours of professional development and coaching just themselves. And so we attribute that to a lot of the success that our students are having.
I can see it in the classrooms when I walk, those pre-K classrooms, you, there's a lot of evidence of the work that's been done here, and it looks really good.
Yeah. And Gwen and our instructional coaches and specialists and everyone are probably a big part of that because most of that happens in-house. I mean, we do go out for some, but.
Well, you remind me that one of the very first things you said after your first couple of weeks going through schools was, wow, your pre-K's really hitting it. Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
Um, the other thing that we, um, are really proud of are our partnerships that we have with, um, our local community members. And I, I do not want to get this incorrect, so I'm going to refer to my notes on this one. But, um, of course, EOAC, as we've already talked about, has. has, you know, we partner with them for our four Head Start classrooms. So, that's an important partnership. And with that, what's really just a great side benefit is their teachers and peer professionals go through the training that our teachers do. So, they're benefiting from that good professional development that Waco ISD teachers are benefiting from as well. And those are shared classrooms. We also have a Waco ISD teacher in those classrooms. But that's really a great partner, a strong partnership. And then, we have the Junior League of Waco. And so, they have really adopted WISD as one of their main focuses. And so, they donate and volunteer their time. They donate to the Roundup Fun Fest, which is our pre-K roundup. And they also donate and help with the WISD Early Childhood Conference and then, other professional development make and takes. So, that is a strong partnership. And then, Baylor School of Education, they have also donated lots, you know, resources for our Early Childhood Conference. And then, also, they do a four-week-long math camp in the month of July. Mila, if you've heard of that. And that's held at Alta Vista and Brook Avenue and Crestview, I believe. And then, we have our solid gold neighbor. And that donates resources for the WISD Early Childhood Conference as well. And then, Inspiracion. As we know, that's the partnership to where we're really working with young parents and helping to strengthen, helping them prepare their children for school. And then, Heart of Texas Workforce, we'll be partnering with them to assist families in enrolling in pre-K and then, future plans for the Early Childhood Professional Development. So, I had our pre-K roundup. And I lost my slide. Gwen, rather than me fumbling, pre-K roundup. Saturday, April 25th is our pre-K roundup at the North Waco Annex. And just like as last year, we will have, it is a one-stop shop. If you come and register for pre-K, everything will be there. So, if you need to have testing done for, you know, your LEAP status and such, everything will be there for you on that day. And there'll also be food and other fun things. So, we encourage people to come. And when we last spoke, she said they're expecting about 500. That's a lot. House Bill Three, it's huge. So, I'm just going to go over a little bit of it. And we've already talked about our high-quality staff. But with House Bill Three, it now requires our early childhood programs to do a self-assessment. And so, in that, there, at the pre-K, in the pre-K area, there are eight components with 53 strategies. And so, there is a self-assessment that is given to us by TEA as a recommendation. And we have chosen to use that self-assessment. And so, on the pre-K self-assessment, we have 13 areas that are developing, 23 that are proficient, and 17 that are exemplary. Kindergarten, eight components with 48 strategies, 15 developing, 28 that are proficient, and five that are exemplary. For a hundred of, or a total of 101 strategies that we're looking at. So, pretty significant. And then, looking at our high-quality professional development, which is what leads to all of this. I mean, having our high-quality teachers is why we're getting the results that we are. And so, we are exemplary in that area. So, it says, LEA ensures that most of the professional development activities offered to pre-kindergarten teachers are early childhood-specific and connected to the needs identified by student progress monitoring data, which is where we pull from CLI Engage. And then, teacher evaluation results and the teacher's ability to address all student needs. And so, really tying our professional development to the results that we're seeing on our progress monitoring is important. And there is a picture of our staff. So, we have Gwen James, our director. Our coaches, Kristen Peters and Tracy Thomas. And then, our parents as educators, Anita Henderson, Paulista Ramos, Regina Cotton, and Yuri Gonzalez. And there we are. So...
Would you all mind standing so we can recognize you just a minute? Because this is really good work. And here you are, and you've stayed. Thank you.
Thank you all for staying late.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Ken Cannon, more board goals.
More board goals to adopt. So, this too is a requirement of House Bill Three. The board is being asked to adopt early childhood literacy and math goals. These goals that we're presenting for you this evening are for third grade, because it starts in pre-K building to getting students to read by third grade, which we all know is an important benchmark and moment for our students. So, currently, we're sitting at 28 percent at the Meets level, which is the recommended level by the state. And we would like to move that to 62 percent by June of 2024. And in math, we would like to move from 26 percent of students meeting math star results to 62 percent by June of 2024. You can see the subgroup data there. We do have a number of progress monitoring tools in place. However, we have some work to do with first and second grade, K1 and 2, actually. And we need to provide better consistency so we can measure from year to year. So, we're starting with third grade with you all this year. And you can see some of the professional development plan activities. Those carry over into the district plan and the campus plans, which you've already approved. And so, I recommend that the board adopt these goals this evening as required by House Bill Three. We came up with these, working with the service center. And their recommendation was 60 percent. I'm looking for Carmen Logan. We went to 62. I started at 70. They told me I was a bit unrealistic. So, we backed those down to their recommendation. We want to do as well as we can. Moving from 28 to 62 percent is a big jump. And you can see in, like, on the star reading, from 28 to 34, that's a significant increase in achievement. And you see that all the way across. So, while that looks low, those are significant percent increases.
Yeah. And the thing about, that we look at is, it's two. We look at the aggregate amount.
Right.
And then, also, the sub-populations.
Some of those subgroups are pretty low. I didn't want anything on that paper less than 30. But some of those are starting well below 30, where we're actually achieving at this point. So, we have some work to do in reading and math in early childhood.
Was that a prelude to a motion, Mr. DePuy?
Sure. You bet. You got it. You got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DePuy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cordwick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Elizabeth Cardwell, first and last, it seems like, almost. Internal audit report.
I'll be giving an update of the internal audit activities since October of 2019. There was a follow-up audit for the athletics complex from the 2018-19 audit, where there were five findings and recommendations given. This year's audit found that four of those recommendations were actually implemented and one was not. There were two additional findings at low risk and two recommendations, they were both accepted. There was a review of the truancy processes where recommendations were given in three areas. All were accepted. And then, there was a review of certain areas of the Transformation Zone Implementation Grant. The main areas reviewed were travel expenses and contracted services. That was for informational purposes only, so there were no recommendations. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your work, Ms. Cardwell. And last, review, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding extension of superintendent's contract, superintendent's evaluation instrument, and 2020 performance goals. All those items were discussed during the board's workshop with the superintendent, I guess it's been two weeks ago, in conjunction with her evaluation, consideration of the evaluation instrument going forward, and what the performance goals would be for her in the upcoming year so that we would be able to evaluate her next year based on those goals that we set this year. So, with that, I'll, any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
As a prelude to the discussion, I'll make a motion, Madam President, that the board approve an extension addendum to the superintendent's contract to include an extension to June 30th, 2023, with no other changes to the contract. And as you indicated, in addition, adopt the evaluation instrument, which we have seen and we have reviewed in addition to Dr. Ken Cannon's 2020 performance goals, which are very extensive and very comprehensive. And the evaluation tool, as well as the performance goals, will be a tremendous enabling factor for us to communicate as a board and not only look at past performance and achievement of those goals, but also look forward to the future as well. So, I make that motion.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Padania. Is there any discussion? I just have, I want to say that we, as a board, have struggled with that evaluation instrument. And I feel like... Yeah. We've been continuing to work on it, to improve it. And I feel like now, with the work that you and your team have done, we have a really good instrument going forward and some very ambitious performance goals. But thank you for the time that you have taken to helping us get better.
My pleasure.
Any other discussion or comment? Ready for a vote?
Would you repeat that and be louder, please?
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Are we already having a motion in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Announcements. Mr. DeBeere.
Thank you. I have three brief announcements for you tonight. I'm really excited to tell you that this week at the Annual Texas School Public Relations Association Conference, our communications team brought home a number of awards, including two gold awards and one silver award for videos that the team produced, gold awards in both the flyer and brochure categories, and that the communications department staff were finalists for crystal commendations for the photography portfolio category and special event categories. And those levels of recognition are the next to the highest levels that are available through that activity and through the awards at that conference. Early voting for the March 3rd joint primary election is underway right now. Tomorrow's actually the last day of early voting for the primary. And early vote sites will be open in McLennan County from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And they'll be open those same hours, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Election Day next week. And then, finally, as we start to look out towards our next meeting, we'll have spring break between here and there. And district campuses and offices will be closed for spring break from March 9th through March 13th. Thank you.